Yeah.
Test, one, two, three.
Ready? Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet regular session on April 26, 2022, 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the notification, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Colley will lead those.
Will you please bow with us? Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we began this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and mature. Bless us to strengthen the bonds of our community. We thank you, Lord, that you have blessed us in very special ways, all the families of Brazos County. We thank you for blessing the Brazos County employees, our first responders, and those with special needs, Father. We thank you for all of your blessings. We give thanks to you for you alone have made it possible. Amen?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none. Number three is presentation and discussion. It's the presentation of the Active Living Plan by Mary Parrish, workforce development coordinator, and Diana Gaetan, community health worker. I'll come up to the microphone.
May the record state its parish with an H at the end. The Active Living Plan is a part of our-
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
The Active Living Plan is a part of our Texas Healthy Community Profile of Brazos County in which we are given points when we complete required initiatives. In the fiscal year of 2021, Brazos County was given honorable mention for the work accomplished, and in 2022, Brazos County was given a bronze level award for work accomplished, which meant that we completed even more initiatives. The Brazos County Health District Community Health Worker is given a total of eight indicators, which include physical activity, healthy food access, healthy work sites, environmental health, healthcare quality and access, healthy aging, mental health, and emergency preparedness. The Active Living Plan is part of our physical activity indicator, which we have been working on for the past two years.
Hello. Before you, you have the Active Living Plan, and there was a coalition that had to be formed in order for us to accomplish these goals. This was started in 2020 and was completed in 2022, the beginning of 2022. So we're going to talk about what the plan priorities are. Okay, so this plan prioritizes strategies that have been developed by community partners. It is designed to benefit local institutions and organizations from all sectors of Brazos County in developing and promoting policies, programs, as well as creating systems and environmental changes to support active living. The vision is to use this plan to guide decisions about policy, resource allocation, program development, and advocacy. Every member of the community plays a role in the implementation of this plan. This document provides recommendations that will enable the community members of Brazos County to adopt and enjoy a healthier lifestyle. The recommendations in the plan are presented by the following societal sectors, which are business and industry, community recreation, fitness and parks, education, faith-based settings, healthcare, mass media, military, which is a new sector that has been approved now, public health, sports, transportation, land use, and community. Each sector offers goals aimed at promoting and offering opportunities for improved quality of life. These sectors provide a framework in which organizations, agencies, and individuals can use to reach the goals.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation, but can you tell the simple-minded person, how is it actually implemented? You said that everyone plays a part, but who actually benefit? Well, we all benefit. I get that. But who qualifies?
Everybody qualifies. So this Active Living Plan should be adopted, which are the recommendations by the State of Texas, should be adopted by the City Council, Commissioners' Court, and so we can have it as a part of our county for active living, such as... So if you see in your book, it talks about business and industry. So you'll see the first strategies and goals it talks about. And it talks about, in the sector of business and industry, they have such recommendations and programs that would be a good idea to be implemented into the city as far as business and industry goes, and also with the same. So, for example, let's see, public health. So we, you know, obviously, we're going to try to implement in our end as a public district, public district, we're going to try to implement any kind of new programs and have everybody as a whole in Brazos County. Does that make sense?
No. It doesn't.
Okay.
But I don't want to be impolite, but I'm concerned about who actually will be the client. I mean, you say we're all qualified, and we understand that, but how do you get these people involved? I don't believe, I might be wrong, I don't believe you're going to go door to door.
Right.
So how do you get your clients?
So if you look in the strategies, you can look into the first one, which is-
Can you tell me?
Business and industry. Give me a second.
Pardon my interruption, but I think Commissioner Colley, you want to know how it's going to be implemented?
Yes, that's the question I asked.
Say that again, ma'am. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Initially, I asked, how is this going to be implemented? And I do understand, as you said, everybody is in the Brazos County qualifies, and we certainly want to support good programs. But how do we benefit? I mean, how are you going to have a client? I mean, who actually gets to work with you in the community?
See, I understand your question. If you'll go into page 15 of the Active Living Plan.
Okay.
Okay. And then, so that is business and industry sector. The first strategy states there, create employee health and wellness programs to promote a healthy living style. So that's the strategy that, again, the committee as a whole, you know, put together their ideas, and that says, how will we do this? Okay, which is your question.
Yeah.
So we have an objective here, and it says, encourage businesses to promote physical activity amongst employees by providing incentives and encouraging active behaviors at work. And a few goals are listed there as well. Okay, so what we want is to have the community as a whole, as far as the business and industry sector, to come together and try to make this happen.
Okay.
Because one person can't do it all, so.
So those that have a job, that support this, might benefit from it, right?
In this sector, yes. So that's why-
In this sector.
Yes, ma'am.
But those without a job, that would be coming to the workforce for hopefully jobs, how are they connected?
Well, there's several sectors here that will include every single person of the community. So the next one is faith-based. So that's a place also where you may find people that are not employed, you know, and will benefit from this as well. So in the faith-based, which is page 19, so-
And you don't have to go page by page.
No, I understand. I just want to give you an example.
Since you've presented it this morning, but, you know, it's just, your goals are lofty, and I can appreciate that. But when the rubber meets the road, how does that happen?
That is, and that is actually our goal as a whole, is to try to bring everybody together in each individual sector, so we can actually, everybody gets an opportunity. And, for example, the people in the churches can help their ways, you know. So here, an example is New Victory Temple. They provide a community garden, okay, to help encourage the healthy eating and physical activity. So they want the people to come to the church and actually help garden. So it's a physical activity. And they actually will come and, you know, get some vegetables and fruits for the community, so.
And that's great. We have some of that going on now.
Yes, ma'am.
But who's going to organize the faith-based
Yes.
component?
So this actually, New Victory Temple will work together with other churches. So everybody in the sector-
So somebody is trained, and they will train others?
Yes. So whoever was part of the committee who put this together will do their part.
Okay. And thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome. Any more questions?
No other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you for the presentation.
No problem.
And best of luck to you.
Thank you.
So we will move on to number, consider and take action on agenda items four through 31. Number four is proclamation 22-0110, or 010, declaring May 1 through 7, 2022 as National Correction Officers and Employees Week.
Well, having been a past correction officer, it gives me honor, great honor, to move to approve this proclamation and to salute each of you. You have my greatest respect.
Second.
We appreciate from our hearts the things that you have to go through. We understand. It is not a job that you're rewarded for. We really can't pay you enough, but thank you all. And I move to approve.
Second.
Most maiden seconded.
And I'd also like to echo Commissioner Colley's comments. We really appreciate the work you do every day for us. It's important work, and it is valued and appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
Most maiden seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and there is none. I'd like to have all the correction officers come to the front.
I think we need to include staff too, Judge. Correction officers and staff.
Yes.
All right. That's a good-looking group.
Morning. You doing all right?
My pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
This is a great turnout.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. It's so good to see you.
So I'm going to read the proclamation this morning, whereas the National Correctional Officers Employees Week was first proclaimed May 5, 1984, by President Ronald Reagan when he signed the proclamation, 5187, creating the National Correctional Officers Week to recognize the men and women who work in the jails, prisons, community corrections across the country. And whereas the National Correctional Officers Employees Week became the official name of the first week of May, when in 1986, the U.S. Senate officially changed the name from National Correctional Officers Week. And whereas the National Correctional Officers Employees Week has been designated as the week of May 1, 2021, through May 7, 2022, I guess that would be May 1, 2022, through May 7, 2022, by the U.S. Department of Justice and federal bureaus of prisons. And whereas the National Correctional Officers and Employees Week honors the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel for their service with honor and respect and integrity, and raises the awareness of the duties, hazards, and sacrifices made by the correctional employees. And whereas the National Correctional Officers and Employees Week of Brazos County recognizes correctional officers and employees for their role in safeguarding the citizens of Brazos County for providing safe, secure, and humane incarceration of offenders within their custody. Whereas the National Correctional Officers and Employees Week of Brazos County this year wants to recognize all correctional officers and employees for their acts of heroism, dedication to the duty and commitment to our community during the COVID-19 outbreak. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County does hereby proclaim the week of May 1, 2022, through May 7, 2022, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. All citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to all the many correctional employees working in Brazos County for the vital public service that they provide, proclaiming the 26th of April, 2022, by the Commissioners' Court. And I'd like to restate what Commissioner Colley and Commissioner Berry both said. I mean, you know, this has been the toughest last couple of years, this COVID outbreak and everything that, I mean, we all dealt with it outside, but y'all were dealing with it within the walls, with people in there that you have no choice but to be around. And this has been a struggle for everybody, but especially for the correctional officers and employees. So I again want to thank you for your service. Y'all have done a great job, and I hope you can continue on for a long time. We're going to, we need you. You know, we always have somebody that needs to be incarcerated, and there's got to be somebody there that's going to be able to keep them in control. So, thank you all. And I'm not sure whether, Kevin, there you are. You got anything? Does anybody want to?
Yeah, thank you. I'm Kevin Stewart. I'm the Chief Deputy of Corrections, Brazos County Sheriff's Office. I really can't say it any better than the judge has, but I just want to thank you, Judge, and Commissioners, for recognizing this fine group of folks that live and work in our community. And, you know, just to restate, really odd, difficult couple of years we've all been through, and we just really appreciate you, and can't say it enough, so want to make it official here. Thank you very much. Deeply indebted to you, and keep doing the great job that you've been doing. So, thank you.
I'm Ward Martinez from the Hamilton Unit. First and foremost, I want to thank all of y'all, Judge, Commissioners, Chief, for having us here on this honorable day. And I couldn't say it any more better than both of y'all have said. I appreciate all and everything that y'all do. We couldn't do it without you. The facility is ran by us overseeing the policies and procedures that we implement every day, but the frontline officers and security supervisors are the ones that take care of business on that facility. And your work and dedication and loyalty to the agency goes unnoticed most of the time, and far more than frequently, to be honest. And although we have a week where we celebrate you guys and appreciate you and show you the appreciation that we have, it's far and foremost that we show you every day on the 365 days that we have throughout the year. And from, on behalf of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice and the Hamilton Unit, we thank y'all for having us, and we thank you for y'all's dedication.
Good morning, everyone. I don't know how I'm going to follow up Ward Martinez with that. My name is OJ Seals. I'm representing the Federal Bureau of Prisons. We operate a prison camp here in Bryan. And on behalf of my warden, Tanya B. Hawkins, and associate warden, Alice Diaz Hernandez, want to thank everyone that's represented in the room today. We recognize your efforts and your contributions to law enforcement and holding offenders accountable. It has been a rough two years. Hopefully, there's some light at the end of the tunnel, or we can all get some relief. Again, we just want to say thank you for your efforts and contributions. We appreciate you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. I'm Chris Coffey with the Juvenile Department. And again, like everyone has said, we just like to thank you guys for your commitment, the long hours that you all put in. At the Juvenile Department, we have faced a lot of challenges the past two or three years with COVID, staffing issues, but staff just keep coming back, keep coming back. They leave, we hire some more, and they keep coming back. So just thank you guys for providing a safe and secure environment for the kids at the Juvenile Department, so they can get back home to their families. And while we got them, we want to make sure we're putting a little bit in them, keeping them safe, but when they get back home, just making sure they don't continue to do some of the things and make some of the same mistakes that they do. So thank you, staff, for providing that public protection and, you know, keeping everyone safe in the facility. And just thank you for all the work that you do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I want to tell y'all, I really do appreciate, I appreciate everything you do. Y'all are, it's amazing that you've got folks that are willing to, you know, y'all aren't officially locked up in there, but you are locked up in there. You're in there, and you have to deal with, sometimes it's rough folks that you may not want to have to. But again, thank you. Thank you again for your service. Thank you for all you do. Okay, we will move on to number five. It's a proclamation 22-011, declaring May 6 through the 12- the 12, 2022, as National Nurses' Recognition Week.
Move approval. I'd like to thank our nurses. They are frontline workers, just as our detention officers are. Our nurses are on the front line every day, and we would not survive without them. And I want to offer my appreciation and recognition for their hard work.
I'm honored to second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Now, I'd like for all the nurses to come forward. And in a different way, but similar to the correctional officers, y'all dealt with folks during this COVID pandemic, except you knew they were sick, the ones you were dealing with, you knew they were sick, weren't sure maybe what it was. So nurses have had to deal with a lot of things, you know, in this last two years that we all did, but y'all were dealing with actually the sick people. So let me first read the proclamation. National Nurses' Day is a day we celebrate nurses and raise awareness of the importance of their contribution to society. This day, May 6, is part of a National Nurses' Week, a week that ends May 12 and marks the birthday of Florence Nightingale. And whereas Ronald Reagan signed the proclamation 4913 on March 25, 1982, proclaiming National Recognition Day for nurses to be May 6. And whereas nursing has a variety of different levels of skill, as well as areas in which they contribute, with each playing an important role with the facilities to maintain the doctor-patient relation care. Whereas nurses are the ones, the most integral part of the medical team, fulfilling a crucial role in providing patients and their families with the highest level of care, as well as a key means of emotional support, significantly contributing to improve patient and family outcomes. And whereas Brazos County this year wants to recognize all nurses in the community, as well as corrections, for their acts of heroism, compassion, dedication to duty, and commitment to our community during the COVID-19 outbreak. Now therefore, be it claimed that Brazos County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 6, 2022, through May 12, 2022, a National Nursing Recognition Week for Brazos County to increase the public's awareness of the importance of the role nurses play to improve and promote health and wellness in their patients, proclaim the 26th day of April, 2022. So I'm not sure who might want to come up.
I'll start us off.
All right.
Me again. Again, Judge and Commissioners, thank you so much for recognizing yet another group of amazing people. And sometimes we don't realize the connection, but corrections and the medical staff and nurses especially, it is just critical to our operations, and they deal with some unbelievable circumstances, and they do a great job. And they've also, the last two years, been nothing less than heroic and have really thought on their feet and come up with some innovative ways to keep all of us safe inmates and staff. And then just the public in general, I know we have some representation from all over. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of me and the sheriff and all the correctional officers for everything that y'all do every single day. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Just on a personal note, hang on, I guess, most of you already know this, but I was actually the second person in Brazos County to be diagnosed with COVID back in the day. And I want to thank the staff at our employee clinic because they got us through that when we had a whole lot of questions and not a lot of answers, and they took really good care of us and put themselves at risk to do it, didn't hesitate.
I would just like to say, I'm Linda Ricketson with Brazos County Juvenile, and I'd like to say that I think we have a wonderful nurse. And I thank you all so much, because I remember Christmas Day, I had to call our nurse, Ms. Julie, and everybody, I think, from the health clinic has come over and helped us out, and they were all right there. Sheriff's Department has been so cooperative also with their nurses in helping us out. Kit's always been willing to help us. And so anyway, we just appreciate you so much because there's a lot you have to do. And during these last few years, you have just been wonderful. So I thank you so much.
So, can I say I have personal experience again? Many of you know I had a stroke January 16, 2021. It was the nurses that diagnosed before the doctors what my symptoms were and got the prompt help, medical help, that I needed. So I'm truly indebted to you and all that you do, and we thank you all.
Does anybody want to speak? Y'all can.
You're welcome.
Well, I know that I'm very appreciative to the staff I report to and the staff that have supported us. And I look around the room, and they're all, because they've got tough at times, but I think we stood by one another, and I think it's a great team to work with. And I'm very honored to be, I have a foot in both, I think all four of us do, one foot with corrections and one with healthcare, and we're appreciative to be involved back.
Can you come to the podium? I'm sorry.
You know, I work with a lot of nurses, RNs and LVNs, and they're the heartbeat to the facility. We couldn't do it, just like the correctional officers, we couldn't do it without you. I work closely, when I was a major before, I had promoted to Assistant Warden. That was my go-to in the past two and a half years. We dealt with a lot, medical staff dealt with a lot, and we had to do it together to be able to actually overcome the whole COVID pandemic and care for our staff and the inmates at the same time. I can't tell you how thankful I am for y'all and what y'all do because I've seen it. We've lost a lot of lives in inmates and staff and family members of both, where we've had to deal with losses and disheartening, you know, times in our lives. So aside from just the normal, I just want to tell you that from the Hamilton Unit and Texas Department of Criminal Justice, we thank you every day for what y'all do because it is not easy. And, you know, I couldn't do it. That's why I'm here where I'm at. But thank you all. Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. So we will move on to number six, is Resolution 22-008, authorizing county judge to sign a corrected tax resale deed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, Keith, you want to come up and kind of share with us what?
Okay, so I'm Keith Tredway, the Delancey Tax attorney for Brazos County and all the various entities in Brazos County. All this is, is a quick housekeeping deal. There was a deed back in 1987 that deeded a property into trust to Brazos County. It did not include the wife when it was, and then when it got, so when it got deeded back to the family in 1998, it only got deeded back to the husband, which has created a problem for the wife in terms of her getting her affairs straight, et cetera. And so she lives in the house, she owns the house. It should have gone back to both her and her husband. It only went back to her husband. What this is, is a pure correction deed, just that basically has her husband and her in there so that everything is nice and clean and she can handle everything she needs to.
Right. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you so much.
Did we take the motion and second? Do you remember?
Yes, I think I made the motion and Nancy seconded.
Okay. All right, so we've already voted, or?
I did not hear you vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is acceptance of donated and unclaimed property left by inmates leaving Brazos County Jail during the months of December 2021 and January 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval to cancel the regular meeting for Commissioners Court on Tuesday, May 10, 2022, due to a lack of form.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I'd like to say that Commissioner Aldrich and myself will be in Washington, D.C., with the leadership class of the VG Young Institute.
I will be there also.
Commissioner Colley will be also in Washington, D.C., with the Chamber of Commerce. So we will be representing Brazos County in our nation's capital.
Okay, well, y'all enjoy yourselves.
No, no, Judge.
It's work.
I understand. All right.
You won't believe how hard it is to catch these lead slaters.
Yeah, that's the truth.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of Chapter 381 Economic Development Program Agreement between Brazos County and Relus Campus Data and Research Center, LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And this is just, this is the same document that we passed, I don't know, a year or so ago, except the dates changed in there because of, I think it was maybe Storm Uri that caused some electrical problems that caused everybody to pause and take a look at how we make sure we have electricity out there.
We had an agreement with the Relus Data Center. Big freeze occurred. At that point, I think the problem was the BTU was no longer in a position to guarantee them service that they needed, and they've since worked through that. They have multiple contracts out for, to make sure the utilities won't fail. And so we're restarting it. The only things that changed were the dates. We have a new start date, so all of the other dates have been dominoed into this agreement. And we decided it was better just to do a brand-new agreement, that we'll have one agreement to go from instead of an old agreement and an amendment with a bunch of different dates. So that's why we did it this way.
Thank you.
And the action today does nullify the previous agreement?
Yes, sir. And this is identical to whether the city's.
It would be nullified because it didn't meet dates.
City.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of temporary order increasing non-consent tow fees.
Judge, could we table this? We have a workshop planned, and I think that information is pertinent, is pertinent to our being more informed.
Okay, so really, there are two issues that have to do with wrecker tow fees.
Yes.
One is the fees that they can charge when a vehicle is picked up, which we have, we've been through the process, and I think we needed information from those wrecker companies that we have not been able to get. This particular resolution is to allow them to charge a surcharge for fuel. So, I mean, I don't mind putting it off, but I can just tell you, those guys are out there picking up vehicles, and they may quit picking them up because they're not able to pay their bills. So that's the reason I put it on the agenda. We can discuss May the 5th on the fees, but.
If we pass it today, it's a done deal. But the thing is, my concern is that many of the cars that are towed away, there are circumstances that aren't considered, and I'd like to have the opportunity to discuss this. And I'm not asking that we delay it very long, but let's have the workshop.
We've got one planned, I think, from May 5th, but it would be to discuss the overall fees and what they're able to charge. This is just a surcharge to allow those wreckers to be able to tack on something during this time when we all know gasoline and diesel has just gone out the roof.
Exactly. We all are suffering from that expense.
Okay, so.
I'll second the motion to table.
Okay, motion made and seconded to table. Any further discussion? I mean, my thought is that these guys are, you know, they're out there actually picking up cars, and, I mean, I can understand where they may decide that they may not want to pick up cars because they're losing money, so.
That may not be a bad idea. It's their choice.
We had asked for, the reason I seconded the motion to table is because the Commissioner had asked that we put this on a workshop session and have that scheduled to talk about it. And I would like to get the input from people other than just, you know, where we hear from the people. I have not heard anything from anyone relative to tow expenses, nor have I heard any further updated detail from the, I believe Constable Lambo had gotten together with everybody, and I have not heard any additional information from anyone relative to the reason for doing this. And I feel like we open up a rather precarious fiscal hole because there are a whole lot of entities that we deal with and contract with that have experienced significant increase in their costs. And I think if we just do this without having a full discussion of it and not including the input from those folks, where we hear from them specifically what the issues are, I think we're kind of putting ourselves on a little bit of a slippery slope where we could not substantiate to others why we couldn't honor their requests of something that was comparable. So I just think it makes sense for us to spend more time listening to and hearing from people as far as the data goes. I realize this is only a six-month temporary, but I'd like to get the whole thing handled because it's been out there since Constable Lambo gave us information about this some time ago.
Okay, so there's, again, there's two issues. One is the fee that we allow wreckers to charge for a pickup that we go through a rotation wrecker, and then we set the fees, and we have done that. And then this, all this is, is to allow them to charge something extra. They have been saying for a long time that they didn't think the fees that we set were adequate for pickup. But the problem is, is that the state law, and I think Bruce may be able to answer better than I do, but I think the state law requires that we do a study to determine what those fees are. Part of that study is to ask those wrecker companies to provide information to us, and I don't, I think we asked for the, we asked for that information, we did not receive, but maybe from one wrecker, so it wasn't enough to actually decide on what those fees should be. So the fees are the same that they've been for a long time. And now, today, I mean, anybody that's buying gasoline or diesel knows that the price of both has risen out the roof. Those wrecker drivers are saying, they have been saying, we're not making enough money, but we haven't got the information to actually make a change on the fees. But today, we could address the issue of gasoline/diesel cost if we choose to, but if we want to lay it, you know, back off, that's.
May I comment, Judge?
Sure.
You have made this point very clear, and I believe as a member of this Commissioners' Court, I understand the situation. But I think it's more important, and even in your presentation, you said you only got one response from, so if they're not concerned and, you know, I state that we continue to study this, and I move for, I move, I call for the motion.
Might I just make a comment? We're talking about non-consent tow fees here.
Right.
This is where you park in a parking lot and they tow you because you're not supposed to park there, you're not a customer of the business.
Exactly.
These are non-consent, this is not when you have a wreck and you need your car moved, or you have a flat tire and you call and you need it moved. This is non-consent tow fees, so I'm in favor of the motion.
To table?
To table.
Okay.
I call for the motion.
All in favor, to table? So that I?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hopefully, we can expeditiously address this, and I would like for that to take place.
Yeah, once we have the workshop next week, I think we can move on it.
Okay.
At least that's the hope.
Yes.
All right. Number 12 is request from Sheriff's Office to approve multiple use agreements between Texas County and Brazos County to include.
Judge, I think you skipped 11.
Okay, yes, all right, I'm sorry. Number 11 is approval of order regulating the operation of oversized vehicles on county roads.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is request from Sheriff's Office to approve multiple use agreements between Texas County and Brazos County to include state highways.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is approval of fleet services from the following request, transfer from Sheriff's Office for additional Tahoe CIP 22-501 purchased in FY 22 due to SO Unit 268 being declared total loss by the insurance company and B funds from this insurance claim to be utilized to purchase equipment needed to outfit the Tahoe.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is request from fleet services to purchase a microphone for the radio and a replacement vehicle for district attorney in the amount of $860.67 to be taken from Capital Improvement Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is permission to advertise for bid 22-115 hot mix asphalt.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is approval of contract 22-128R for Internet Services with Fiberlight LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is no award of RFP CIP 22-627 Democrat Road and Peach Creek Road Bridge Repair due to limited response. The only response exceeded, and the only response exceeded the project budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion.
Judge, I was wondering, did we go back to that one responsive bidder and see if there was any opportunity to negotiate that?
Yes, sir. We only received one, this is the second time we bid this out, and we went back to the only responsible, the only bidder that submitted a proposal. We did attempt to negotiate with them, and it was still in excess. The evaluation committee came up with a, an amount that they thought would be agreeable for this, and this was far in excess of that amount. And so we checked with Road and Bridge again, just to make sure, and Ms. Parthena Bennerji agreed that we were still in excess of that, and so we're going to go back and see what we need to do to try to redo it.
Well done, sir. May I ask you a question? What action do we take? Do we split it up into two projects now? Is there, or do we include it with other larger projects to try to get?
We're currently in discussions with Road and Bridge because we have multiple similar type projects coming up. We're going to try to see if we can do a better job trying to solicit vendors to put bids in, evaluate how we bid it together as a package, so forth and so on, to see how we can be more successful the next time around.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes, sir.
Okay, did we, we hadn't voted on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is approval of the following committee for evaluation proposal for RFP CIP 22-636 JP Constable Precinct 1 Building.
Move approval, A through G.
Aye.
Second.
Motion made, seconded.
Maybe, may we discuss this? I'm not against the motion, I support that, but in looking at A through D, the voting members, there's four. What do you do if there's a tie?
Commissioner, our process that we have, that we, ideally, we like to have a consensus vote. We have a, everyone reviews it independently, we come together and we have a discussion. In the event that there, there wouldn't technically be a tie because each individual member can assign an individual score if we would like. If we're not able to come to a consensus vote, each individual member can associate for each category and each vendor a particular score, and we would take the average of those to assign the final score for those. And so it's not like we vote yes or no, it's nothing like that.
Right.
And so a tie is potentially statistically possible, but in the event of an eventual tie, we come to Commissioners' Court as the statute allows to break a tie. But I don't, I don't think that that would be possible.
So would it be, Charles, would it be a problem to name five voting members?
It's not, but if it's statistically almost.
Would you consider that in the future?
We can put as many as you want on here.
Charles, did I say James? Charles, thank you, but I think that sometimes we might have a tie.
If you would like, we can put as many on here, we serve at the discretion of Commissioners' Court, we're happy to.
And that's why I brought it up, Charles. I just would like us to appear to be able to handle any situation.
You tell me how many you want, and we'll be happy to put it on there.
Thank you.
Would you like us to retract this and we'll come back next week?
No, I'm not going to ask that. I just ask in the future, let's name five voting members rather than four.
For every committee?
Yes, I would.
I mean, that's not necessarily the agenda item here today.
An odd number.
Yeah, there needs to be an odd number. I don't care if you name three.
Yes, ma'am.
But there should be an odd number.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's my concern. And thank you, Charles, I know you do a great job. I appreciate the pains taken by your staff and yourself, but I noticed that and I thought, well, we might need to address it, but thank you for it.
Well, and Charles, I hear what Charles is saying, I've been, I've been, years ago, we quit doing that, but you, each one scores, each person on there puts a score in for each one of those categories, and then you total it up, and the highest score is the one that gets it, it's not like a, you know, a tiebreaker.
I understand, Judge. I have participated in these committees, and Charles handles it very well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is permission to advertise for RFP CIP JP Constable Precinct 1 Building.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is approval of the following committee for evaluation of proposals for RFP CIP 22-638 Peach Creek Cut Off Road Construction.
Move approval, A through G.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is permission to advertise RFP CIP 22-638 Peach Creek Cut Off Road Reconstruction.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is approval of the final plat lots 1 and 2, Block 1 of the Hightkey subdivision, 4.58 acres being all of the Kenan P. Hightkey, 4.577 acre tract, volume 1981, page 33, Samuel Davidson lead, A13, City College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, site located Precinct 1.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 23 is approval of final plat for Garrison Creek subdivision, Phase 2, 26.72 acres, 21 lots, WLLS survey, A-117, Brazos County, Texas, site located Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 24 is consider and take action on Wixon Creek Special Utility District utility permit to construct road board for a one-inch water line crossing under Elmo Whedon Road, 2240 feet northwest of Timberwell Drive, site located Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 25, consider and take action on Sudden Link Communications Utility Permit to conduct an 80-foot road board on Gold Nucket for the Internet line crossing 160 feet southeast of Golden Trail, site located Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 26 is request permission to enter private property owned by Milton Franklin, located 2846 Lakewood Drive. Project will clear silt and reestablish drainage channel for roadway cover, site located Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 27 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 21/22, 29.1, 29.8.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 28 is personnel change status.
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 29 is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8114766 through claim number 8114902 and claim number 9004741 through claim number 9004788.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We will skip down to number 32 is acknowledgement of FY 2021/22 budget actuals by funds as of April 30, 2022. Number 33 is acknowledgement of reports submitted in April of 2022. Number 34 is juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We presently have 42 in juvenile detention, 32 males and 10 females. We have 11 in isolation per our protocols, and we have 37 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Number 35, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Chief.
Morning again, Judge and Commissioners. This morning, our total population is 590. We have 501 males and 89 females. We have 67 on electronic monitor with 14 pending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Number 36 is announcement of interest items of possible future agenda topics. Number 37 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. We'll move back up to number 30 and convene an executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code 551.087 for deliberation regarding economic development negotiations.
Time.
Me, Mr. Bull, Ms. Roach, Colton, if he's interested. I think I'll probably be it. Well, yes, staff.